Oh. Talked with, uh. Quick, we, we talked with them to discuss, you know, the, the, the natural, the, the nature of a disc golf fairway. How is that going to impact that, that, that wildlife? And they agreed, you know, that they, they would classify it as what they call a recreational walking path. No impact, uh, to, to, to the wildlife. You're talking toads and spotted salamanders. Um. No fairy shrimp, because if they found a fairy shrimp in the vernal pool, it would have been significant. But, um. Yeah. So, and then regarding the trash. Um. So ninety-one percent of disc golf courses in the world are actually public and free to play. We've got a unique scene here in Maine where it's privately owned courses. And so I'm, I'm going to be kind of the day to day operations of the course. And, uh, I'm, I'm going to be ma- maintaining the course and making sure it's clean. But to be honest with you, I don't think we're going to have to do a ton of that. Because disc golfers in the community, uh, there are other public courses in the area in Kennebunk. There's one behind the, uh, Consolidated Elementary School. There's one, uh, at Rotary Park in Bitterford. And if you walk those courses, uh, they're really clean people. It's, uh, actually in, uh, in Canada, but they're building a ton of disc golf courses because the disc golf community is, uh, cleaning up the parks. They'll have a park that looks relatively, you know, un- unkept and there's trash. And the, the disc golf community actually really tries to take care of the courses that they're, that they're on. And then lastly, sorry, this is long-winded, but we'll also, uh, be putting, you know, uh, trash cans at the tee pad of every hole. To encourage people, you know, kind of like Disneyland, they got trash cans everywhere there, you know, uh, encourage people, you know, there's going to be a trash can coming right up. Just make sure you're putting it in there and I, I, I don't, I don't think we'll have to worry too much about that. Yeah.
Are there any other questions for the applicants? Hearing none, I will end the public hearing at seven ten. Does the board have any questions?
One, we, uh, talked about it last week, you, um, I see you, you'll have your own private septic. Um, what about the water? That, that can be public?
Well.
The well?
Still looking into that part of the.
Where was, where would that be located? It, it's, have you? Yeah.
Okay, everyone didn't talk about, so. Your line just directly deep the.
Any other questions? I think we, we have a couple of things that we're going to have to address because the discussion about impervious surfaces came up at the meeting. So, you know. I had the sidewalk, sorry.
And that's what I was just looking into the second. Sort of the, the, my question from last meeting about the surface. Think you guys have, have noted that the parking lot, and this will be a speed. You know, plan on being around or?
Uh, we, we would like to be, obviously, it, it, you know, depends on what, what you guys allow us to do with a gravel parking lot, but, uh, we were under the impression, uh, during last meeting that, uh, you guys have determined that that would, that the gravel would suffice as impervious because it's considered impervious in like every other calculation you do for like the wetland runoff or the water runoff and things like that.
Right. What I was just looking at was any, any parking area in the town that's over fifteen spaces requires pavement. On the last, you've got provision for seasonal parking area. Wait, that's, I guess, or what, I don't know if that's one of the questions that came up at the sidewalk.
Well, Lee J, uh, evidently talked to Roger and Roger said, I'll let Lee J explain it.
Well, I first, that might be correct that statement, okay? Because the ordinance, but prepare for this, yeah. The ordinance, um, said all parking areas, riders and other areas, certainly quickly on more big double A, connecting to the concrete or an equivalent service over the problem base of the state. And that was the way that when we had, it's kept well, it was two months ago, yeah, it's hung around there. And issue became up there and that explains that I've discussed the prior to consider a impervious surface. And impact gravel didn't find it. At that time, it was no longer employed at that. But was that would be a compatible service? In looking at the plans, the applicant's proposing, um, twelve inches of gravel DOT spec B. Yeah, um, and in, uh, three, three inches over, um.
Okay.
You've got pretty good loss. Right. And that, that is on the way I said. So when it's up to you, um, folks, how you want to handle that. Your message from the beginning is to win discussions.
Yeah, five, twelve, two.
And then again, you're going to next thing we talked about seasonal operation.
One, one of the questions is whether we consider this, uh, seasonal. It seems like you, you, you really prefer to have year round, so. Therefore, the question becomes, is this an equivalent service? Uh, while everybody's thinking, I'll, I'll just throw out. I'm all for less pavement, it, it seems like for, for many reasons, uh, it just, it's more expensive. It's, it's more, uh, well, it's probably less maintenance, uh, than in gravel, but better, uh, probably for the environment you, um. And just to, so, but just because I think that way doesn't mean that we don't have to follow that requirement, but how do we know whether this is equivalent or not? I guess that's what it comes down to for me.
The more the thing that we have to go on this point, the more of a person that, um, that is, that people do today. So. Um, if you don't feel that way, and, and to consider a market of the day. I'm not going to go on again, but in general, something you said on what is happening everywhere in USA. Um, even as we have, and they're doing the bay, parking standards. Because there's so many, no, building of pavement that towns and municipal town across country, they're going to find that all that. We have a lot of pain issues, we have stormwater issues. Um, and sometimes some communities are actually eliminating the parking standards altogether.
To the chairs, again, as the person who addresses people with special needs, and I know we talked about this before. Um, the amount of that you have as a base and the crush you have as a base, and then the, the, the way that it was described as the top layer seems like as long as it's maintained in a way that is rolled so that you're nice and flat and able to utilize it for the people with walking issues and with, um, with wheelchairs issues, I don't, I don't foresee it as an issue because again, it's a cer- it's a, it's a surface. But again, it requires maintenance. Um, so unlike pavement, when you're there, you're there. If you do it well, it's going to last you a while, if they do it well. But I'm saying, um, with that surface, you need to maintain that on a regular basis because the earth is going to move it for you. Um, so I'm not opposed to it at all. I'm just wanting, again, as a person who's saying this coming from that standard, that needs to be maintained on a basis. So I don't know if that has to be put someplace or just discussed as, as, as one of the options.
Along that line, um, your gravel. I'll ask Lee, what, where is the standard of putting reclaim over the gravel? As. Well, to add, to add to the, the supportness of the base.
Well, the, the, the issue becomes reclaim is, is another, uh, form of asphalt, if you will. It's like a liquid asphalt or more liquid asphalt that they can put on to compact it. Um, but in the sense that it is a, another, um, the equivalent surface is, you know, what's discussed here doesn't say reclaim. It says equivalent surface. You could consider, um, reclaiming equivalent service if you chose to do that. Um, as you could include, um, compacted gravel, um. The surface of the three inch top is, um, DOT spec A, I think is what you're calling out. Can you explain what the D is versus?
I think the D goes up to three inch stone and the A goes up to half inch stone size. So, you know, it's a lot finer mixture. So it rolls really well and stays like a smoother surface.
Yeah, well, compacted down.
Yeah.
Much less bigger aggregate in the, in the.
Just, just like a pavement, to get a good compacted surface, they probably bring a steamroller out there.
Right.
And roll the whole parking lot too.
And, and they certainly will do this. I'm assuming in the construction phase, they will roll it when they're done.
And that's why I was saying it to maintain it, because then you have to go back and re- and unlike a page, you have to go back and roll it to make sure that it's staying in that texture.
In, in defense of, uh, pavement, you're going to have to reseal that every five years or so anyway.
Reseal the pavement, you mean?
Yeah.
Paved?
Yeah, because you're going to end up with some cracks in it and it's going to move. You're going to have to have work done. Uh, I tend to think, uh, and this is just my showing my ignorance about pavement. Uh, I'm familiar with reclaim. We did not mention reclaim in the permanent year round parking lot. But it is mentioned as a temporary, uh, as a seasonal situation, and I believe we did that because of the nature of reclaim. So I would say that it would not be appropriate for a year round driveway. I don't have a problem, by the way. I was completely unaware that gravel, you know, crushed, paved, rolled over would be considered an impervious surface that would be acceptable in the place of uh, in, in the place of pavement. But if, if Roger is saying that, that he thinks that's acceptable, I'm going to leave it up to the rest of the board as to how they feel about it. Is, is that acceptable? Or should we say, no, we want it paved if it's going to be year round?
Uh, to the chair and to Lee J. Which I, you know how much I love to put you on the spot. Um, I think the precedent as provided, it hasn't presented it quite a few problems, uh, that Roger established, I don't know how many years ago about fresh gravel as opposed to reclaimed as a, as opposed to pavement. I think we should, uh, go with the flow and continue on with the precedent until such time as it proves itself to be unworthy of our approval. So I'm going to say, I think we should go with it as written. Unless you can tell me a reason otherwise why we might not want to do that.
So you're, you're saying not take Rod- Roger's recommendation?
I'm saying to take Roger.
Oh, to take Rogers, okay.
As a precedent unless there's some reason why.
If, if something goes awry in the future, then it would be a matter of modifying the ordinance to be very specific. That pavement period not more equivalent.
Right, but it has proved itself to be unworthy to date.
Right.
And I don't see any reason why we need to upset the precedent.
Well, I think this is, this is the first time we've ever had this issue arise since the, since the ordinance got written on parking lots. We've never had the discussion before.
Sure. To the chair. To be quite honest, I mean, I'm not sure how many, well, you've got certainly some commercial developments with over fifteen parking spaces, but, um, not a lot.
Not a lot.
So it's not like you see this issue every day, uh, for discussion.
Well, I do remember back when this was put in, it was put in with the seasonal aspect in mind because the, the year round parking lot was already there. And we had a couple of seasonal businesses that were, were saying, really, we're open in the winter time for snowmobiles? Do we really need to pave a parking lot? And this was a compromise that we came up with.
A question is, uh, the surface you're talking about, is it just a parking lot or does it also include the drive in?
Include the drive in.
Drive, okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that, that to me is probably more of a concern, especially at, at the apron, it just, uh, I don't know.
Well, the apron's paved.
It would be paved from how, how far in?
It's, it's got to be cheap required.
Well, DOT was to the property line and your ordinance, I wrote it down way back, it was thirty feet. I went from thirty feet from pavement, but it's really thirty feet from the right away line, so I increased the length.
Okay, good.
So it'd be forty-two feet, sorry, from the pavements. That'd be thirty feet from the right away line.
Okay.
My, I got that. But I went thirty from the pavement and it should be thirty from the right away. So that'll be a forty-two foot paved apron.
The DOT requires that for the interface with the road.
Right. DOT stops short, it's at the property line with DOT, but your ordinance is stricter in DOT.
Sure. So, I mean, I think given the nature of the business, it will self-regulate the situation, whereas if the gravel surface becomes, you know, tough to pass, um, then they'll recognize it in lack of customers and clientele and will look to do something to correct it.
I, I, I appreciate that, that comment because I, I think you guys see that we, we haven't cut any corners on this. We want to make a nice preventable, you know, presentable uh, professional park and, and, uh, and, and exactly that you alluded to. Um, it, you know, we wouldn't be spending this amount of money to make it that nice to have a really crappy parking lot. First impressions are only one time to do that.
Also, the, the nature of the, the business and the nature of, of disc golf in general, the gravel would be more, um, suitable to what you're actually trying to make with the nature aspect of it and the, um, preserving the area and preserving the quality of being out in the woods um, versus being an asphalt blacktop as you're driving in and then you're going off into the woods. So, um, as long as it's maintained, I'm more for going for the, the way that it's written as an option. Um, and then again, to just keep an eye on it, that's maintained.
Thank you. And, and building on that, there's over seventy courses in the state and, um, there's only one with a paved parking lot, uh, and that's because the parking lot was pre-existing. It's at Pimlin Farms. Uh, and they added in the disc golf course after the fact. And so, I mean, it, it really is the, the nature of, of disc golf in the rest of the state too.
So, so you could be the second to state have paved.
No, thanks.
No, uh, with that, I'm going to make a motion that we, uh, consider this or accept this as an equivalent surface.
I don't think it requires a motion.
Okay. No, nothing, okay, so.
We need to deem it complete, is that right? Lee J?
I, I just have. I just have one more question. We have a letter from the fire chief. He's recommending that you put in a knock box.
Yes, not a problem.
Okay.
So then I, I move that we approve the application.
Yeah, Marty, go ahead.
What is the width under uh, driveway? The width of the length. Is that wide enough or am I with the fire truck or how?
It's, it's wide enough for the fire trucks. It, they'll just have to slow down when they pass each other coming and going.
Actually, I'm saying that you had certain questions before.
Yep.
About width of different other things. I know when the fire chief was, was playing with that we had twenty-four feet and we had some width. It is twenty-eight feet with the side edge. So that's why the question is that, you know, because if you have flowers, you know, everything goes that way. If you have water, you have more edge.
The chief said that he had adequate access for fire apparatus to access the building. So I'm going by the chief and I did put a ladder truck template all around this parking area, so a ladder truck can get in and get out of the site. Yeah, the, I get it.
Bringing up my question, David. Just, just as an example, um, in our street standards, a minor roadway that can be used something by the town, the town would need twenty feet. And, uh, on the prime street standards, uh, two to ten lots, which would be exempt and go to staff would be with sixteen feet. So.
Yeah. You're playing.
I'll reiterate, I move that we accept the application and approve it.
Follow that.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded made by Susan, seconded by Paul Green. Uh, to approve the application. Go through the notice of decision.
Yes. You have those decisions drafted.
Okay. Uh, application prepared by Paul Gadboy. Uh, the applicants submitted the request for site plan review on May first, two thousand twenty-three. And first appeared before the planning board for completeness on May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. The board went over the application with Paul Gadboy representing the applicant. The planning board had numerous questions for the applicant about the layout and maintenance. The board found the application complete and set a date for a public hearing on June sixth and the sidewalk to be held prior to the public hearing at five thirty PM. All site plan review applications shall be evaluated, approved, approved with conditions or denied based on the following list, the following findings of fact. A, the proposed project conforms to all standards of the zoning district and meets or exceeds performance standards specified in sections five, nine, and ten of this ordinance. All performance standards have been met. B, the proposed project has received all applicable federal and state permits. Yes, which includes basic main DEP tier permit, stream crossing, Army Corps of Engineers, and main DOT curb cut opening permit. C, the proposed project does not unreasonably impact public safety and fire protection and will not create a financial burden for the town of Arundel in the provision of the emergency services and law enforcement to the project site and neighborhood. No. Uh, D, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon the quality of surface or groundwater resources. The applicant is proposing a parking area and small clubhouse for the course. Minimal amount of work is actually required on the property to accommodate the fairways through the woods for the course itself. E, the project proposes, the project provides adequate stormwater management facilities to produce no additional peak runoff from the storm during a twenty-five year storm event and will not have an undue impact on municipal stormwater facilities or downstream properties. The applicant has submitted a stormwater analysis and based on the provided calculations, the twenty-five year storm runoff will decrease after development based on the design pro- proposed. The proposed project will have, not have an adverse onsite and offsite impact upon exiting vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems within the community or the neighborhood. The site access is along Route one. Main DOT has issued a street opening permit to allow for access. There are no sidewalks or other pedestrian facilities in the immediate area. G, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, marine resources, important cultural resources, or visual quality of the neighborhoods surrounding environs or the community. For the most part, the site will be left in its natural state and if anything, would have a positive impact on small wildlife being able to find forage once the project is complete. H, the proposed project will not produce noise, odors, dust, debris, glare, solar obstructions, or other nuisances that will adversely impact the quality of life on surrounding parcels. The developed site will only have people talking. No machinery or heavy equipment will be utilized on the site. I, the proposed project will not have a negative fiscal impact on the municipal government. The project does not require any municipal support. Based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the site plan request with the following conditions. Per Article ten, section ten point seven, the applicant must submit a performance guarantee to the planning department in the amount of two hundred and forty-six thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars prior to the commencement of any site activity associated with this approval. Number two, compliance with all written materials submitted as part of this application. So approved by the Arundel Planning Board this, this date, June sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion.
Mr. Kennedy, or it won't occur. Um, Tom was not at the last meeting for which this occurred.
That is.
So you have both read the materials or seen the minutes, could you please state that so that the board can determine if the chairman hold would, um, would, would be appropriate on this application?
I have read the, the reports, reviewed the materials and have no problem.
And I've read the reports, the documentation and, and, uh, reviewed the, the plans.
Yes, Susan.
Um, the only thing I know that the, the, the commentary you're doing is from Lee J and it's just going through the discussion of each one, going through, um, H, the proposed site produce noise, odors, dust, debris, glare. Um, just as a person who has been on a disc golf course, it's not going to be just people talking. People are going to be, uh, nothing's going to be loud and obnoxious. I just want to make sure it's clear. People are going to be yelling to each other. Did you find it? You mean decide because someone can have music. I just want to make sure that it's it's, it's a recreational place. It's still going to be, it's going to be people, it's going to be recreationally used. It's not going to be loud. There's not going to be machinery. But I just want to make sure it's not just going to be, hey, that was a great shot. It's not going to be. Do you know what I mean? I just want to make sure that it, because you have it in the recording. It's just not going to be. Yeah. I just want to say that.
I was taking that off from the applicant's statements at the last meeting.
Which I truly appreciate. I just want to make sure that it's not, you know, it's not a library. Just want to say.
Tom. Um, it is to that point, um, with the, the abutters, um, concern, there was, um, fairway nine and ten are the, the ones that are closest to the, the butters. There is a little bit of room for that to move a little further away, so it just, it might be if, uh, a consideration just to, to pull it back twenty feet.
Yeah, so, so, um, with the, the, the shape of the fairways, um, we, we had, um, basically the, the, the world's best course designer come in to, to, to design the course layout for us. And, uh, so he's utilizing the shape of the land. And so we had discussed that before regarding some of the wetlands and things like that. Could we move some things? But it, um, it doesn't exactly work like that because we're trying to preserve all the trees and, you know, if we, if we move a fairway, we might suddenly be cutting down dozens more trees and yeah, of course, of course.
Ledge or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no, and we, we appreciate it and agree with you on, you know, do, do, we can't, just it's one of those holes. It is the coolest shot that runs between two pieces of, of ledge. It's just like a tunnel.
Oh, that, that's whole, that's whole, uh.
The sixteen, oh, okay.
That's all sixteen.
All right.
Yes, Paul.
So, one of the things that, an option that you could do is right, you could plant different things along that border that would help with sound dampening and visual and all that, right? So that's something I know that once you guys get into it, not to interfere with your fairway, but there are things you can do to add to it that would give them some privacy and noise reduction and stuff, right? Just, just consider that stuff.
Yeah, so, no, I agree completely.
Okay. Any, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Great.
Moving on to the town, oh, we have to sign this. I was just going to sign it and send it down. Thank you.
Hi, good luck. Thanks. While I don't have any, do you want me to start?
Yes.
All right, so a couple of things, um, we want to start by paying moments and I was getting to that against the other announcement and kind of stuff, all the way. Um, so we need an announcement that come for anybody. Um, so we need an announcement that come for anybody that's interested in going to the S F M. Rich is going, um, Paul Green is going, um, and Keith is going. This now executive.
The date.
The twentieth.
Um, you okay for anyone?
Okay.
For the town, so please let me know. Um, when I have that, which is on the twentieth. One given, um, of this month. And the dinner, um, and the theater that we're bringing in is state promised. Lot of, I mean, I'm going to stay. Um, and so, I think it's, I don't know, it's moving that far and, you know, there's. You know, a lot of, uh, sort of like, you know, around, so. Um, if you're interested, let me know, let me know, may I say, maybe, maybe you can chat for, um, then. Ian and I, um, were tasked with, um. Devising the schedule for the select board to consider. And so I will include that, we will be, um, considerable changes in the schedule since it last, last change in two thousand and eighteen. Um, so you got to catch it up there. Um, but one of the things that I noticed, um, and we discussed today is that. Within the subdivision regulations, there are sections where some of those things are actually laid out in the regulations. What I'd like to do without changing integrity of the regulation for you folks, so it's only pass on to you folks. Is, um, amend some of those sections and I will bring that forward to you, that has to be done tomorrow. Um, I think they're looking in that caucus sometime for the new fee schedule, going back. So, um, I will pray for the draft and propose changes.
Yeah.
Um, to eliminate those numbers from within the regulation. Um, in sight that, um, as, as approved by the select board, the better money. Um, and I need to order a couple of, uh, minor little amendments relevant to that. That, um, I will bring forward to you for discussion.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem because we don't have any control over the fee structure. I didn't even realize it was in the ordinance.
Yeah, and I saw that, I'm like, so that's in every time you change the fees. You gotta change your, that's what we're.
Yeah, I know.
That, that's just the.
Well, that's.
Alright, why don't we just pull the.
Oh, he's going to, that's, that's gonna be the change that we make.
He's going to come here and be for. So. You'll see that again. What would the? Question, there's, I had had three changes, there's, there's improved by the, so I have to go to town again. If we were that, the damage because we brought our money there. No. My understanding, they will put those fees in.
Yeah, I, I think they're, they're kind of like, are doing the subdivision or doing any changes to our bylaws. We can do them and we don't have to put them off. So the same thing will happen.
Sorry, they, they only let you see things that we have in a, absolutely desire. How are that going with the, with, they would wear, they tend to. And found it. Using my lawyer's stuff. But it's applicable, we can. Along the way.
It's not up to the selected.
Paid by the advocate? Yeah. Um, no, yeah, we, we had a lot of, well, I have a four. From the mound, through the order, and then we, we talked, we looked at it. We turned it out, or.
But there's, there's still a court case on that dealing with the eighty K violations. And. Who knows, who knows when that'll settle up?
Comes a lawsuit, um, and we're on the winning side, we could request, we could go now, we could, we could bring all of our attorneys to this. From the, um. The advocates, that, on the other side of that. Then, um, but there is no way for us to request them, they are coming in a wonderful way.
Well, I, I think it would be.
Particularly applicant. That, uh. Many, not the advocate. Then, your job, yeah, over. Month and month and month, where the claim was, was done, not, when it goes to the lawyers, you know, the lawyers go back and forth. And chase around and around. And they still going to do the, 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 the very last minute where they just deny much or more. For the family of Cooper.
That's, that's a question for the selectmen to decide whether or not they wanna chase it down the rabbit hole.
Yeah, the only, the only other way is it goes to court.
Marty, generally lawyers' fees and legal fees aren't paid to the losing, by the losing party or. To the, uh, prevailing party until the case has been settled. And even if it goes to appeal, it's still have to wait.
It has to get through the Supremes.
It's finally adjudicated.
Subject. But we dealt with this group, I would say, within the last year.
Right, but there's no way to recoup your fees until the matter is adjudicated. And that is after all appeals have been exhausted. Because in appeal, they could be the winners as opposed to the losers.
But the, it's not our job to cover the town. It's our job to interpret the ordinance. And, and make sure that the applicants understand what they expect. It's this, it's the board of selectmen's job to enforce the ordinance. And, and whether. Uh, there are times that we don't like what they do and there are times that we do like what they do, but it's their job, not ours.
Um, last one, um, Rich, do you want?
Yes, uh. It's been suggested by the selectmen, by, by the town manager, that we no longer broadcast on Zoom. You'll notice that it's still on the back, but they're, they're looking at it from the, from the point of view that. There's no reason for us to do that. I tend to agree with them and since we have an ord, uh, we have a. Our, in our bylaws, it talks about the fact that we get to, to make that determination. I'm asking you to make the determination that we stop broadcasting on Zoom. So now if anybody wants to. See what's going on, they're going to have to show up in the meeting.
To the chair, what is it hurting?
If, if you take a look at a lot of the videos, yeah, it's. There, there've been issues with getting things to work on, on time, just three meetings, two meetings ago. We weren't, we weren't getting anybody in the chat room that they wanted to get in. I had no indication that there was anybody in the chat room. It, it doesn't matter. I mean, I just assume. I, if we can continue to broadcast it or we can continue to say, no, they're not allowed to participate, they're not allowed to talk.
There are, there are elderly people that do come on here and I'm thinking of, of, of one that lives in Clearview Estates who likes to come on and watch our shows, our, our shows, our videos. Um, and doesn't, it just wants to be informed. I don't see if it's a problem just to turn on a Zoom link than to, to maintain it.
The videos will, we're still going to record the meetings.
Not live, though.
They're just not gonna be live.
Correct. So I'm just asking what hindrance does it really to just push the Zoom link on?
Why can't we fix our technology?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's really the issue. This is very glitchy.
It, it is, yeah.
In spite of what we spent.
But again, that's a discussion with the selectmen.
Well, I think it's worth having.
I, I think if, if we were to stop broadcasting, be. There'd be a lot of complaints. People would think we're hiding things or whatever.
They could, they could come here and say.
No, I, I make them, I vote keep Zoom on.
I second that.
I vote that we fix the technology, keep Zoom on.
Yeah.
Okay, you wanna keep, you wanna keep Zoom on? I don't care. We'll, we'll continue to broadcast it.
Be made, I, some, someone that, that had, so you just come in.
Should be seamless.
Maybe worse.
It should be.
Right.
So, some of it is, you know, there's, there's a loose nut behind this keyboard over here that creates issues.
Couple of loose nuts.
I thought you were, so for people as opposed to.
But yeah, it's, you know, we, we can continue to do it.
Well.
I agree with Marty. I think we should keep it.
Okay, then we'll, we'll keep it. People will be able to, to, to watch it live or watch it taped. They can watch it taped anyway, but if they wanna tune in and watch it live, okay. Cause you, to, to Susan's point. Does it make a difference? Not really.
That's the thing is if it doesn't make a really difference to us and, and there's no cost, there's no thing, there are people that do utilize it on occasion for information that they want to. And they're unable to get here physically, um, for their own reasons, then I think that we should be able to have it optioned.
Okay.
Tell Keith we need to fix the system. So that it's seamless, we can turn it on and turn it off. It shouldn't be that hard. I'll tell him.
No, I won't change in a second.
Uh, we do have, well, it, it doesn't actually require a vote. Because the decision is mine based on, on the way that the bylaws are done. I wanted feedback from everybody as to, you know, if, if you had all said. We're fine, just stop doing it, okay, but you're all saying no, you want it to continue on, so I'll take, I'll take your advice and we'll continue on.
All right.
Tiny homes.
Oh, well. No, I was gonna say, before we close, I was just gonna suggest, we might wanna look at, that was, um, talking about five point twelve point two. About one of the two. We either go to black gravel. Right, um, they were, they were, they were like that. So, interestingly enough, um, I got a call today from someone that was looking at parking issues, um, in another town or everything. And, um, what the people did, um, pavings were required or not. In the back, it is an option to either have pavement or gravel, in that gravel. So I didn't go any further than that, but the order is, that was your, your option. So, I mean, I think you want, um, at some point. Uh, take it with another community, another language, see if there's something else that you might be interested in. Um, if you've got time, you will prepare it up. Give it away somewhere, follow it in the winter. Next time, getting, I got other, um, we had this one already, kind of working on, and how could it, or yet. I think we want to bring a little bit of that, which, um, things, so that might be one of the, 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 take a look at.
Yeah, I don't think so, uh, you know, I gotta have a complete kind of, I mean, this makes me glad, I, I agree with Dave, like anybody said, quite frankly. I hope this is gonna keep it alive. Our big issue is you have a safe. Right, beginning, and from there, it's up to the business to keep it up.
Yep.
It's probably people are gonna come and.
I would say that. Could be dependent on the business. And I think, I think that's where I was with this scenario was in favor of the flexibility to do it. But. There could be other operations where a poorly maintained gravel surface is just fine for whatever. Commercial entity is going on, but it may not be in the best interest of the patrons or the town.
Right, like a trucking business or one of the things that's constant moving and have a heavy machinery in the wintertime and in the spring. That wouldn't be the best situation, but I mean, this is gonna be people coming in. And small vehicles and utilizing it in the wintertime for, for events and things versus it being, um, continual. So it's like if you're looking at like the storage facility or the trucking facilities where things are coming in and out, you need something more, um, sturdy, so.
If you open it up in the winter and it starts falling, that's good highway, you'll pick it up. It'd be nice to.
Yeah. Yeah, I think. I thi, I think if we treat. Crushed paved gravel as an equivalent surface, that answers, that solves the problem right there. And it becomes their choice unless we think that it should be paved. At which point we say, well, no, it has to be paved.
We're looking at a lot of, you know, we're definitely, you wouldn't expect to see something like that.
I hope not.
So, yeah, I'd like to have Lee J to look at some wording and in regard to like what would be. An appropriate surface and maybe even looking around to see if they have some versions of what businesses would be what. Or, um, amount of trips or amount of weight or something like that would be, um. Contingent on what surface we recommend or have.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, on to tiny houses.
Okay, tiny homes. Which is an important discussion for this board of directors. Um, this is the last two days, you're in the, and I am doing several people looking at what they can bring. To the town. Um, and it's an interesting, especially when we had something because of the state laws, getting to that minute. This little presentation I had done actually several years ago now. Uh, tiny homes made, um, because they're very different than, from other new state as well. Um, so, I was, two of the problems that I've had with the problems, um, I've had to admit, all of the facts. But what is, you know, with the tiny home? So, you gotta one thing there, um, certainly I agree that some of the homes are not tiny homes. Campers are not tiny homes. As a matter of fact, they're, tiny homes are not certified by giving, um, world. And manufacturing housing, um, manufacturing housing or state of Maine is not getting involved in tiny homes either. Um, there is no. Real certification for tiny homes, whatever, discuss that. Um, but tiny homes are no more than four hundred square feet in size. Um, your state law, it can be, um, wheels with parkage from off right. Or they can be placed on crosswalk or the foundation. And make sure it's on left. Um.
Bottom left? Bottom right?
Part of it is, part of it is, well, finally, it's not, yeah, um. So the main that, um, we've got the statewide starting area for tiny homes. There's the main, um, building and energy code, U B C, which is the goal of the code that, um. Most everything in the state of Maine utilizes for the, the requirements. And that code has been amended to recognize certain standards for tiny homes. Um, be able to. Recognize more nearly tiny homes. Not anymore, scaled down, everything, um. They're not campers, as I mentioned, um, they are recognized as a flowing unit.
Um.
Lee J, can I ask a question real quick bef, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but what would? Fifteen years ago. If I wa, walked into Jim Nagel's office and said. Uh, you know, before the, even the term tiny home became commonplace and I said. Jim, I wanna get a building permit to build a four hundred square foot home. What would he have? What basis under the codes would he have? Have to tell me, no, that is not allowable.
Great question, Jamie, um, and to be quite honest, I'm not, the building code is a issue, not, that, um. But I will tell you, um, the whole policy issue that we're talking about for affordable housing issue, I thought a lot. Because of some of the other things that are going on along the way. For example, um, a minimum. Square footage for a living unit. In the state of Maine is recognized as a hundred and ninety square feet.
Wow.
So if you wanted to come in and go along a hundred and ninety square feet in size on the foundation, on the crosswalk at that time, you could.
Seriously?
Have to be recognized that they tiny home to be, um, to be constructed. The issue becomes that there are certain standards for every size. And. And, um, a, a home does not become a home until you have a kitchen facility. Uh, and kitchen facilities are not counted in the square footage of, um, one hundred and fifty square feet. Tiny, the reason why homes are in different kind of home, because they're on either chassis, that it can be more. That's the big factor. And I, I will jump ahead a little bit. Um, there was a point in my presentation was at one time, early on in this issue where tiny homes could not be called over state roads because they were not recognized, um, for being proud of the roads. Um, since that time, there's been an amendment to product state law. And in order to, um, go behind home, state of Maine must certify by the Secretary of State, um, Division of Motor Vehicle. Um, before it can use the state in its own way. There is a big impact on the name of the whole department, goes to them, sort of. For that purpose here in the state, but one of the folks who are dealing with, um, the community going on. So they can direct them to get certification from the Secretary of State. Um, but anyway, the, the long and short of it is, is someone came and wanted to build a simple home, hundred and ninety square feet, fifteen years ago, they could do that.
So Lee J, I have a question, because Rich and I have talked about this. And there have been a lot of articles in newspapers. I think I sent you a couple of them from the New York Times about ways in which to mitigate the housing prices and, um, and the rental units and so on and so forth. But, you know, the biggest concern is if a tiny home is on wheels, does that home pay tax? And does the environment of that home, especially, uh, young people get to go to school uh, without having to participate in the tax base?
So that's another great question. Um, is, is, um, if it's on wheels, I mean, that's no different than a, a home. For example, you'll, you'll not go to the right, seventeen by, or seventeen by fourteen by seventy. Those are on wheels, so those have skirted with, with high wheel. The issue is that if they're on a piece of property for less than a hundred and eighty days at the year, then they can't be taxed. Um, if they're there for a full year, um, then they can be taxed. Um, one of the things that, um, I drafted from working in the government down this way is that tiny homes can come in down, um, but they can be put on a crosswalk or a blockage. Cannot stay mobile at all. They have tiny, pounds utilities. And, uh, so we have the power, uh, part of the discussion with tiny homes is that they have complicated ones. But that is not recognized. Again, like, like, for the waters for year round use, an application to the allowable, that's a. Oh, let me, let me explain.
No, I have a question. I have a question. So if someone wants to be more environmentally friendly and use solar power in a compost, composting toilet, they're not, they have to tie in for the, with that ordinance, even though they have to probably get water. So you could use that. But I'm saying requiring someone to join CMP, I mean, or another electrical company. I mean, what, what does that have to do with? Again, the world now has solar power and the world now has, has composting options to be more off grid. Granted, you have to have water and such, but to require someone to go on the grid to, for permanency is not environmentally necessary for someone especially who's going to be living in a tiny home. That might be their goal is to be that way.
So Lee J, uh, not to interrupt you, Susan, but I have a question. Uh, because right now our school taxes in the town of the Rundle, and actually the three communities is, is just. I, coming from a big city with high tax property taxes, I was, um, surprised by the amount of school tax that was a part of my property tax every year. And I think, um, there must be some way, at least for Rundle, since we don't have infrastructure that's more formal, like sewer and town water, that we need to find a way to make these tiny homes, um, available as members of the tax base. So that if they come, even if you're a seasonal worker, for instance, and you enroll your children for under a hundred and however many days, eighty days, uh, you would be able to send them to school and take advantage of that, but not pay any, um, taxes. So, um, what do we need to do to allow these tiny homes? I agree with Susan to a certain extent that people like solar power and composting toilets and whatever. But would a foundation, uh, you know, there might be a series of prerequisites, combinations or standalones that would make these tiny houses, uh, permanent and a part of the town's tax base. And that would be my main concern, that, um, these homes don't come in and leave, yet take advantage of some of the opportunities that the town offers through its tax revenue. So.
So there's nothing, um, in our local ordinances at this point that prohibit tiny homes um, from, from coming in, other than making sure that certain regulations, like the Secretary of State certification um, for those units. In fact, part of the state law does not even allow local code enforcement officers to inspect the units. Um, so tiny homes can come to town today. Um, you know, it's a matter of if you want more permanency of a tiny home with, you know, full foundation frost wall requirement type of thing, um, does that, um, there, um, you know, utilization of the utilities, and I can read the state law on that as I go through this presentation. Some of the things to encourage that type of development, for example, in Bangor, um, the city worked with a developer who purchased, um, an aging, um, single wide mobile home community. And has allowed them to replace those mobile home units with tiny homes. And so it's becoming a tiny home community, no different than any other mobile home park, if you will, um, or manufactured housing park, but just to accommodate tiny homes. Um, that can be done. Uh, there's nothing that says you can't do it. Um, and again, tiny homes could come to town to- tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any objection to tiny homes per se, or even as ancillary units as a place I, you know, guest house or second dwelling.
Right.
As long as it's.
Or an ADU.
Or.
Or an ADU.
Right, or it's ADU, some way qualifies, uh, to be fully functioning members.
Sure. And, and, yeah, and like, as an example, I mentioned the ADUs. I mean, some towns, some towns are saying, we don't, we don't want them to be used as ADUs. In fact, one town I'm working with wants the minimum ADU size to be four hundred and ten square feet, which basically would not allow any, would not allow a tiny home to be used as an ADU. I think, again, the issue there with them is permanency. It's, um, they may choose to allow that, but it would only allow it to be on a full foundation. So they can be brought in, but they'd have to be put on a full foundation, so they're not easily hauled off. So someone can't say, well, you know, I have an ADU and end up using it as a rental unit for six months out of the year and then haul it off and, and it goes someplace else.
Right.
Um, and those are some of the issues that some folks are concerned about, um, with, with these things being on, on chassis and wheels.
Mm-hmm. And I think rightfully so, actually.
And, and, and again, that mean, you know, that doesn't stop someone from building a, building a tiny home, um, a four hundred square foot unit, um, on someone's property as an ADU. If it's encouraged, and it can be encouraged.
On your example from Gunquit, it says, um, and C, it says to be connected to the sewer system or septic system approved. And that, and also tiny home must be located on a permanent foundation or frost wall.
Yep.
Those are two that are more talking about permanency than talking about other things in regards to connecting to other things. You need water. And if you want to have a frost wall or foundation, um, as an option, I think that would be something we could probably get behind on that regard. I just don't feel very comfortable of requiring people to connect to a conglomerate of CMP.
Yeah, Marty.
Go ahead, Marty.
Question. You said composting toilets are not allowed, correct? But, 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 question is, why does the United States government allow composting toilets? I know, I had to live with one, okay?
I agree with both what you, you and Susan is, is saying. Uh, I think we need to take a look at that. I don't know if that's necessarily a tiny home issue. I think it's, it could be a, a. Yeah, just.
Question is, these tiny homes, what is the living space? Is that living space for one, or is that living space for two?
It's not.
No, I mean, that's because what is considered bedroom or vice versa?
Yep.
No, no, no. What I'm trying to get at, you have to have closets, you have to have for a bedroom classification. You have to have certain requirements to qualify it as a bedroom. If it doesn't have closets, it's not considered a bedroom.
Marty, it's basically like a studio. It's basically like a studio. So a closet that's there, a spa, a storage space, covers the entire space. So it's not a bedroom. The whole thing is the bedroom. The whole thing is the living room. The whole thing is the kitchen. The whole thing is, it's, it's just how it's, it's oriented. It's kind of like being in an RV, but a permanent structure.
Okay, the next question is, if this has to be approved by this, uh, Secretary of State, does that have a title? Because anything that's on the road or vice versa.
That's.
Has to have a title.
That's, that's why they have to be certified by Secretary of State, Division of Motor Vehicle. Motor vehicle has to inspect them and certify them for over road travel.
So, so Lee J, do me a favor, please.
Yeah.
Rewind back again and explain to me, and I know I don't know one that interrupted your presentation, uh, to go down several rabbit holes. What is the, what is the land use and or zoning issue that we are sort of facing that warrant the discussion of tiny homes?
If, if I might, Lee J, I think the issue that we're facing is do they have wheels? We have an ordinance that does not allow RV vehicles to be parked on private property year round. Because they can be driven, huh? They, they're not allowed to live in them. Right, you're not allowed to live in it if it's parked there.
Except, except that under the state law, they're not considered an RV.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm looking at, at the illustration that you gave us.
I, I understand.
Yeah, that, that one in the center, that's.
That's, that's, the one in the center is an RV.
Yeah.
Tiny home law specifically says that they are not an RV.
I agree. I, I, I wanted to investigate this. I think we should allow RVs. I think we should allow them as ADUs, but we should say, you have to take the wheels off.
I'm not sure I agree with that.
Well, I, I think it needs to be put on a foundation.
So, so our definition of a tiny home looks to be that it's harder than. Right? Is that what I'm interpreting this top section here as a whole or just?
Yes.
And Lee J, a, a tiny home has to be stick built. Is that correct? Correct?
Um, well, stick bill, I, we got a bunch of things going on here. First off, let me say that under, under the definition, um, tiny homes do not have wheels and does not include a trailer, semi-trailer, camp trailer, recreational vehicle, manufactured housing. Um, I believe, if I recall correctly, it's been months since I drafted this, that that was a, and, um, an amendment that the town wanted.
So manufactured housing, if someone's built it, if they have a kit and that's not applicable?
No.
So all, like all these houses that we put together, like a puzzle, the big ones, those are okay. But if someone puts together a puzzle tiny, that's.
Correct. There still is, so manufactured housing, um, law, the, um, uh, which includes, um, single wides, double wides and the like, they have a nationwide certification process. Tiny homes has no certification process.
So manufactured housing wouldn't qualify anyway. A sing, a single wide is, is fourteen by seventy.
Correct.
Nine hundred and eighty square feet right off the bat.
Correct. Now, um, a stick built home, again, if someone wants to do a, many of these tiny homes are built in a manufacturing facility.
Mm-hmm.
They're no different than a stick built, being built on site. The same materials are used and like. Armage. The difference is that, um, you can build a stick built on site tiny home, um, to be defined as a tiny home would be no more than four hundred and, four hundred square feet. And of course, as I said, the smallest would be a hundred and ninety square feet under state law. The.
Other than the cost.
Yep.
Jamie decides he wants to build a tiny home.
Yep.
And I don't care how much money I spend on the construction of the tiny. What is the, what is the benefit to be of building a tiny?
You got me. You enjoy living in very small spaces. Very minimal.
That's what I'm trying to.
Yeah.
Understand is, and again.
Right.
I'm, I'm struggling, like, right off the bat, of why we're having this topic here.
Simply because, I think it was simply because it is another form of housing that is getting particular attention in the state.
Okay.
Um, that doesn't mean that it's not allowed. In fact, I think the state law says that tiny homes shall be allowed anywhere, any other residential development is allowed. Um.
Uh, in our definition, it seems to me required that it's built on old foundations.
Well, this is not your definition.
No, no, we don't, we don't have.
This is another town. This is another town.
We don't have, the town doesn't have anything.
Right, we, we, we don't have, we don't have any standards at this point. We, the top is merely a definition of a tiny home.
So we need to come up with a standard for the town of.
If you, if you choose to want to do that, yes.
Don't we still have a, a lot requirement for a home, or it has to be an ADU requirement attached to a already existing lot? Like you, you're just, the people aren't just going to park this randomly places. They can't do that. I mean, don't we? It's a house.
Well, right now, they can, because we don't have any standards. They can haul it in and plop it on a parcel and.
What parcel? And it's, I'm saying it's called, that's called a home. In other words, it's a part, random parcel, just park it anyplace and.
Pretty much.
How many tiny homes can you have in a, uh, on a parcel land?
Uh, one, just like.
No, I would, I would argue that you could have possibly up to eight under the new, under the LD two thousand three. Although, whatever that affordable housing unit thing is, that says that they can put a couple of houses on. That says that they can put a couple of houses on each one of the, of the lots. Well, you can have two, but you could also have two duplexes.
But we don't have, they they would, they'd have to have a full septic and a full, they'd have to have.
But the the part of the other issue comes is you're, you know, here you are plopping a four hundred square foot. Home on a one acre lot. You know, the minimum lot size in the state for for septic systems is twenty thousand square feet. Um, none of our standards go that low. If we were to. Create an overlay zone or some other zone for tiny homes and said that they can be on a twenty thousand square foot lot.
Before we go too far with this, it seems to me that um, any uh. The the issue really is wheels or no wheels or or transporting it here or there. It's not necessarily the size of the structure.
Correct.
A four hundred, like three hundred square foot house would be allowed on a firm foundation.
Sure.
With this, with silver.
Sure. Subtic system, yeah, yeah.
So we're, so not to, what do we do about? Those on wheels, is that allowed?
I do have a question. So any of the single wides I've seen all over Arundel, are those grandfathered or something? Or it's just because the skirting's covering the wheels that we don't think they're on wheels?
No, um, there, I I I can't say they're grandfathered. There is, under the manufactured housing law. Um, you can't bring a single wide into town unless it's um. Um, a new, what they call a newer mobile home, um, which is nineteen seventy six, I believe. Um, or newer. If it's pre nineteen seventy six, it cannot be brought into the town.
I thought they updated that date.
No.
Okay, a question that they have to be on a foundation or anything else like a mobile home.
Mobile homes don't have to be on. They have to be anchored on a slab and can have skirting around them.
Correct. Now, these don't need even to be anchored, a tiny home?
Nah, they do have to be anchored. Um.
A slab?
Nope. No, there's a new anchoring system. As I understand it, they're not required to have a slab, but and and that's recognized in the um. Main uniform building and energy code, M U B E C code.
Anchor them down?
I I don't know exactly what they look like, Marty.
So Lee J, can we cut to the chase a little bit?
Sure.
Uh, this is not directed at you, but just in general, sort of like where what Jamie was thinking. So. You would like, given the fact that people are coming to town with questions about tiny homes. It's an issue that we have to consider. And the question is. How do we want to define it? How do we want to consider it? And then we would need some suggestions from you. Um, and input from the board to come up with some kind of regulations. That would oversee. Uh, tiny houses, tiny homes coming into the town of Arundel.
Sure. I mean, I I was asked to, you know, provide some information for discussion purposes. Um, that's what I've done. And I merely made the comment at the beginning that. It's appropriate discussion simply because we have had a couple of requests in the last couple of days. Um, but um, you know, whether you do something now or you wait and do something later, I don't think it's an urgent need. Um, it's just a matter of eventually addressing it because it is another form of housing and it is coming.
Yeah, well, so um, you know, as you're getting fielding these questions and people want to bring them into town, I think it serves us to. Get the matter. Codified in some way for the town so that there's, you know, someplace for the C E O to go.
Sure.
And say, here's what you need to do in order to bring your tiny house into town.
Right.
So it's our job to come up with those.
Yeah, and that's why I think the presentation piece that I provided, you know, has some of the state law information in it. Um, and you know, this would act. You can change this or modify it to say or do whatever you want it to in these performance standards. And that would, you know, you're, we have a performance standard section in the ordinance. That we would plug, be able to plug this right into, once we get standards um, that everybody agrees to. Um, like, do you want them on frost wall, full fond, or full foundation? Or do you care? Do you only require them to have skirting um, around them and be anchored with the minimal anchoring requirements? Um, you know, if you don't want um, utility tied to it and they want to be, you know, solar powered. Do you want to encourage that?
So just to qualify, to answer Susan's question, is it a state regulation that tiny homes either have, have to have a septic? Or and cannot use compostable toilets and solar energy? They need to be connected in some way to the infrastructure of the town?
So. This is a piece that's in the presentation. It's L D fifteen thirty, which was um, adopted several years ago now by the state. Um, and it says municipal, municipal inspection. It says a tiny home may be placed on a property for a hundred and eighty days without an inspection under this subsection. A tiny home may be used as a dwelling. A tiny home may, may be, but is not required to be connected to a utility, including an electric service. A water service, or if the tiny home is connected to water service, a wastewater sewer or septic system. Of an adjoining stru, of of an adjoining structure. A municipality may inspect. May inspect the following for tiny. Tiny home meet the requirements of title twenty nine A. Um, tiny home is placed on a stable surface, ground or footing. Um, any utility connection to the tiny home, and if the tiny home is connected to a water service, all rules, requirements related to wastewater. So. If they're connected to a water service. Water service being a well, you know, a dug well, um, an artesian well, or a public water system. Then they have to have some sort of a septic system, a wastewater system.
Right. But it also says it may or may not. It's not required. A tiny home may be, but is not required to be connected to a utility, including electric service, water service.
Right, but I would suspect that's only a temporary nature. And you can hog off in a hundred and eighty days.
So, so we need to come up with.
Yes.
Some. Some thoughtful guidelines.
Yes.
Well, this is, th- th- this is the point where. We look at it, our job is not just to enforce the ordinance. Our job is to plan what's going to happen in the future. And I think we need to look at this because. We're talking about affordable housing. We're talking about A D U's. I think these things would make great A D U's.
Sure, and and that could be part of the performance standards developed is to say that tiny homes are encouraged to be utilized. As an A D U.
Um, the big, the biggest problem they have, I mean, an A D U can only be a maximum of eight hundred feet. Well, these are only going to be four hundred feet.
Right. Right.
It's just gonna be a smaller version.
They're not gonna conflict with our, with our A D U issue.
Question, can a tiny home be larger than four hundred?
No, no, state law says four hundred.
So my question is, if this is a law, L, this is um, L D one is fifteen thirty?
Yep.
Okay, so if it says a tiny home may be placed on a property a hundred and eighty days without an inspection under the subsection.
Correct.
So that means whatever we put in place does not need to be in effect. It can be in effect. It's not, it has to be required to be inspected until after a hundred and eighty days. They can be there for a hundred and eighty days.
Right, but if you're putting it on a, if you're requiring it to be on a foundation or a frost wall. Then it's gonna be there for more than a hundred and eighty days. And it will have to have some, some inspections done for, for utility hookups. It's not gonna be inspected for construction purposes. It current, it says in the law that code enforcement cannot do that.
Right.
But it can be inspected for utility hookups.
If they utilize utility hookups.
If they're gonna have a well.
If they're an A D U in Arundel, they're going to have the you, the facilities, they're gonna be connected to something.
Correct.
That's part of the definition that we have for A D U's.
I I don't, I don't think I brought up, to acknowledge your respect, A D U. I'm just asking in regards to the law. I want a clarification of the law.
Clarification of the law is, is that if they're gonna be hooked to a public or a water supply. Then they need to have a septic system.
Absolutely.
Correct. I'm agreeing. I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm saying in no, no way does it say that they have to have public and they have to be connected to anything.
How would they, how would they get water supply?
Um, have one thing filled with water?
No, it's not acceptable under state law.
That's why I'm asking.
Yes, and that's what I'm telling you.
So, so in other words, we have to go back, we have to come up with a set of regulations and uh. In order and guidelines so that people coming here with tiny homes. Uh, know what they need to do to perform and. Be a good citizens in the town of Arundel. So what do you suggest we do? I'm moving this along because it's eight thirty and um. But what do you suggest we do as next steps? Can you give us an outline of things to consider? Or do you want us to come up with things that we think we should consider?
Right.
Give them to you or?
I mean, I would say, you know, use this information, do your own research. Um. This, this thing is a starting point. And you know, that way you can come up with performance standards that you think you need or don't need. Um, I think it's a fairly lengthy conversation that you're gonna have. Um, because there are certainly different, different points of view amongst the board members. Um, and you know, you'll want to come to someplace that you feel comfortable with. For developing those standards to allow the units to come into town. Do you want to allow them as A D U's? Do you not want to allow them to A D U's? Do you want to create some sort of a zone where they're allowed on smaller than one acre lot sizes? Um, do you want to have a, in a tiny home overlay? Where someone could create a, uh, like a, a manufactured housing. Um, development of just tiny homes. I mean, there, there are so many different ways you can go with this if you chose to do that.
Well, I I actually like this, this definition of tiny homes that you've given us. I don't, did this came out of a gun quit, the definition?
Yes, most of it is state law.
Okay.
Um, but you know.
You know, it, to me, it answers the questions that I was looking at in relationship to a tiny home. It's on a foundation and does not have wheels.
Question. Can tiny homes be put in camp? For a hundred and eighty days?
No.
Up to the campground, I guess.
Why not?
Be, well, I guess it depends on what. Hang on, Marty. It depends on how you define a tiny home. I I define a tiny home, the, the way it is on this page, it's a, it's meant to be a principal permanent residence.
Yeah, but I mean.
And it's. Campgrounds are not.
But for a hundred and eighty days, but the fact is, it's better than camping in a tent in the rain.
But that's up to the campground owner.
They're all in Lurch Beach like that. So it's that, it's, it's, it's a space permanently constructed on a foundational, you have it as that, but. People utilize them as seasonal things as well. That's why if you make it just that.
Because Bentley, Bentley had suggested at one time, building smaller units.
He wanted to build glamping.
Glamping, which is the use, yeah.
But I'm just saying. Why couldn't a campground? If they want to run out of sight. Okay? Stepway turn around, it was it was a tiny home. For the si, the season or the week or whatever.
They do in Lurch Beach at different campsites.
They could. If it's in a campground, because the campground is not running around, it's gonna close up. You know, but they're, they're still gonna have to, if, if it's a tiny home, they're still gonna have to put it on a foundation.
No. Wouldn't happen. Cause it's unwieldy.
Then, then if it, I'm go, I'm gonna argue, I'm gonna argue that we adopt this, this. Criteria. If we adopt this criteria, that whatever goes into the campground and keeps its wheels on is not a tiny home. It's an R V, for lack of a better term. It's not gonna be a tiny home, because the definition of tiny homes says it's on a fixed foundation.
If you choose to.
If we choose, if we choose to, to adopt this, yes.
How much of these tiny homes running?
They can run up to a hundred and fifty thousand.
For a four hundred?
It depends on what you put in it, Marty.
Okay.
How many gadgets, how many?
Hardwood floors, piling. Um, yeah, they, they, they run it up to a hundred and fifty thousand.
Whatever, whatever you want to put in.
Basically, but people just live on a smaller thing and they utilize it to go places with it. So we're just saying, maybe take that part out. But it's a lifestyle choice.
Yes.
But I thi, I, I think from our point of view, the first thing we have to decide is. Do we, do we want, what, what's the definition of a tiny home?
Right. So I think that, that's critical. And then what are the, from a zoning perspective? What are the dimensional requirements for a lot that the tiny home would be placed on?
Right, but I think one, once we come up with the definition, we can then work on all of the other things.
Yeah.
Cause, because we can't, we can't put the cart before the horse. We can't say, what lots can we put this on? We have to know what it is that we're talking about putting someplace.
So I suggest we go home and digest a lot of this information. And come back with more concrete.
And if, you know, if you wanna, if you wanna have fun, go out to YouTube and type in tiny homes. There's tons of videos about people who live in tiny homes.
There are design books, there's all.
There's all kinds of stuff.
So what is Red Apple, by the way?
It's a campground.
I know, but a lot of those campers are on foundations, aren't they?
If, if they, if they are, it's because David had required it. But, but a lot of those are there year round, but they're not lived in.
I mean, that would be a perfect place for a tiny home.
But there are also taxes and they're also paying taxes on the.
Do people also party or do they?
There many times they own them. Yeah.
At Red Apple?
Yeah.
They own it at Red Apple, they own them over at uh. I can't think of the name of it, not Bentley, the other one. Hemlock. Bentley's has people who want, they're supposed to give the town a list of all of the. The, the pieces that are owned and all of the pieces that are there year round.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean they do, but they're supposed to. I think Dave Berg, Dave Berg used to do that. He used to go through. And I, I believe he paid all the taxes and then he went and got it from the owners of the property.
Yeah.
Yeah, Rich, don't forget.
Let's.
That the fact is Bentley did the same thing for all those. Units that are not coming out.
Thank you very much.
Rich. Rich. For Bentley did the same thing for all those units that are not removed from.